I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education to order. There are two closed session items on tonight's agenda. Student enrollment in one case, education code section four eight nine one eight F, and collective bargaining matters discussion with negotiator Daniel Figpin, Executive Director, Labor Relations and Government Affairs regarding CSEA Chapter 127, General Operations Support, chauffeurs, teamsters, local number 150 transportation, supervisors, teachers, and certified supervisory units, and regarding nonrepresented groups, management and confidential units. We do not have any speaker cards on the closed session agenda items. We will now move into closed session and will return to open session at six thirty. The recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. Board meetings are being held in person in the boardroom at the district office, and the community is welcome to attend. The meeting may also be viewed on the district's YouTube channel where it's being live streamed. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the Dell Campbell High School Air Force Junior ROTC.
Hello. Oh. Hello.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Zima Creason, Board President. To my left is Pam Costa, Board Vice President. That scared me. So left is Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Clerk. And to his left is Mr. Ben Avey and Ms. Tanya Krevcheck, Board Members. To my right is Superintendent Melissa Bassinelli, and to her right is Board Administrative Assistant Stephanie Cunningham. Members of the public, I'm sad to share that Board Member Polly Viescas will not be with us in person tonight as she's contracted COVID-19, but she is with us on the phone. Out of an abundance of caution, she will be participating in this meeting telephonically. Here at the here at the agendized location of the meeting, San Juan Unified School District Office, three seven three eight Walnut Avenue, Carmichael, California, nine five six oh eight. All votes tonight will take place via roll call. Ms. Viescas, I would now like to ask you to respond to the following questions. Are you able to hear our proceedings on this end?
Yes, I can.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes, I do.
Has the agenda been posted at your location at the district office?
Yes, it is.
Is your location such that any member of the public could participate in the public portions of this teleconference meeting from your location?
Yes, though it's highly not recommended.
Thanks for the hot tip. Members of the board, are you able to hear Ms. Viescas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Individuals who are attending the meeting in person and would like to offer offer a public comment, we ask that you complete a speaker request card available at the staff table, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time during the agenda. Please note that Board Bylaw nine three two three limits visitor comments to two minutes per speaker with no more than thirty minutes per single topic. Time will be extended for any speaker who use it is used who uses an interpreter. Please note that public comments, including your name, become part of the public record. We are now at item D, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty second?
I move.
With my Ms. Krevcheck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Avey? And I have to do the roll call vote, so we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Krevcheck?
Aye.
Ms. Viescas?
Aye.
Mr. Avey?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Costa?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the motion passes unanimously. We are now at item E one, recognition of the 2024 Certificated Employee of the Year, Dr. Toto.
It's on. Okay. Good evening, President Creason, Board Members, Superintendent Bassinelli and Mrs. Cunningham. It gives me great pleasure this evening to recognize two outstanding distinguished teachers of the year. Karen Davidson, who is a music teacher at Lois Pasture Middle School and at Casaroble Fundamental High School with twenty years, twenty-two years experience in the district. And Susan Sloan is the librarian at Bella Vista with over thirty-three years of experience in the district. These two extraordinary teachers of the year came to us through the nominations of students, staff, and the community. They embody the commitment of the excellence of San Juan teachers that we have in our district. They provide positive, caring, learning environments where students can thrive and enjoy growing and learning each day. Let's give them a round of applause before I have Mr. Roth come in. Congratulations. I would like to turn the microphone or the podium over to Mr. Barry Roth, President of the San Juan Teachers Association, as he would like to say a few words about these amazing individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. On behalf of all of the practitioners in San Juan Unified, the this recognition is such a fantastic calling out of your professionalism, your dedication, the manner in which you welcome all students every day. And we had, as you know, but not everyone may know, there was a team of us that got to have the opportunity to visit them while they're working with students. And it was so clear as we walked in, these safe spaces you created in your library, in your music program, so that students felt seen every day so that they can achieve their very best. And that exemplifies what practitioners do throughout our district always. So thank you so very much and congratulations.
Again, these two individuals are outstanding members of our district, and I want to congratulate you on all your hard work in being nominated for this.
And please stay at the house seat for just a little while, and so we can see if you have anything to add to this wonderful, wonderful dedication. Any comments, questions from the board? Mr. Avey?
Congratulations to both of you. I do have to say, Ms. Sloan, I was able to visit your library last year when I was visiting Bella Vista. And I really appreciate how much I learned about the teacher librarian role. I think it went so much farther than I had understood that role to be and really how it does integrate into the whole learning experience. And so thank you so much for that work. I'll also say I'm a big fan of the Bella Vista Library Facebook page, so be sure to follow it. It's a great way to keep up with what's going on with the school. And I apologize, Ms. Davidson, but congratulations to you as well. And best luck and thank you for all you do.
Any other remarks? Superintendent Bassinelli?
Yeah, I just wanted to extend my gratitude. So I had the privilege of seeing Karen in action at our San Juan things. And that's just a little sliver of what she does that is beyond all the work that she does throughout the day. And that service that you provide to our students is amazing. And that event is a beautiful culmination of all the hard work with our students and also our staff. So I want to say thank you and congratulations. And Susan, as I shared earlier, so my son Johnny is a graduate of Bella Vista. He, when I came home from the Teacher of the Year event, and I had shared that you had received an award, he was so excited for you, and he said that you were so helpful for him with college and career. And he just spoke to the work that you did with all the students. So on behalf of all of our students and staff, I want to thank you both very much for your dedication and hard work for our students. Thank you.
Superintendent stole my final closing, but I'll just say, I think it's pretty cool that we have such amazing teachers. We just have such a wonderful team. A lot of people doing a whole lot of hard work to make sure that our kids have what they need. So you're appreciated, have such a great time celebrating with you a couple of Friday nights ago. Let's keep the party going. We're here for you, here to support you, and I'll be visiting soon. All right, thank you and congratulations again. So we are now. Looked too many pages. We are at item E two, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight we'll hear from student representatives for Rio Americana High School and Casaroble Fundamental High School. Welcome, and let's begin with Lainey Shada and Morgan Reed from Rio.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. I am Morgan Reed, Rio Americano High School's ASB Treasurer.
And I'm Lainey Shada, Rio's ASB President. I'm so excited to be back with you all again this year to talk about some of the amazing things that have happened on Rio's campus so far this school year.
Over the summer, Rio was fortunate enough to have our furniture flooring project completed and parking slots redone, making more spots available for students and minimizing traffic during pickup and drop off times, benefiting not only the students but and staff, but surrounding Rio's neighborhood as well. We began the school year with our back to school jersey dance and rally. We sold over four hundred tickets to the dance, providing us with the perfect opportunity to get students excited for the new school year.
Our football season is off to a great start. Last Friday, we beat Burbank forty-nine to zero, continuing continuing our record of being undefeated this season and marking our program's best start since nineteen ninety-four. Additionally, Rio has welcomed its first ever girls' flag football team, and they had their first game last Thursday. Despite being a new program, there's been a lot of interest, and we are excited to watch our girls play this season.
Another new program we have is our girls' seven-on-seven rugby team, which was created as a Civitas project by a student on campus. Our girls' golf season golf team is looking forward to a great season with many returning players, and our boys' water polo team is off to an amazing start. Last weekend, they traveled to Hawaii and got first place in the Punahu Invitational Tournament. Additionally, earlier this month, our girls' volleyball team competed in the CIVT preseason varsity tournament where they were undefeated and won the tournament.
Our annual Fall Club Rush started today, which is one of Rio students' favorite events. We have over fifty clubs here on campus to represent the diverse interests and values of Rio students. Additionally, student government started a new tradition of the tireless teacher award where students or each month, students are able to recognize an outstanding teacher, and student government presents them award, giving our staff and teachers the much deserved appreciation for their hard work and dedication.
As senior year begins for the class of twenty twenty-four, and students are beginning their senior project, Rio has welcomed its annual food scraps recycling program. Two Civitas students have introduced separate trash cans specifically for food scraps. Those scraps go directly to Rio's Gardens composting bins to help reduce our school's environmental impact.
Rio is excited to host our annual College Night next Thursday. At this event, San Juan students will have the opportunity to speak to over sixty colleges and universities, as well as other career and educational opportunities. We're so excited to have students and families from all over San Juan come out.
As of late, student government is preparing for our homecoming dance on September twenty-third. Being our biggest event of the year, homecoming will include a spirit week, a rally, hallway decorations, and our homecoming game and royalty. We look forward to an event full of school spirit.
Lastly, Rio will be hosting its first small ball night of the year on September twenty-seventh in our Performing Arts Center, and we welcome the board to come out and see some of Rio's most talented musicians.
Finally, we would like to thank the board for taking the time to hear about all the incredible things happening on Rio's campus. We're open to any questions or comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great report. Looking to my colleagues, any comments, questions? Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to thank you for the report and volunteer the next time there's a Hawaii trip. I will go as a chaperone. Okay? Thank you.
So like I have, oh, any other comments, questions? So I've been holding.
I'm gonna jump in. I just want to say, this is Paula on the phone. I'm really sorry to be missing you all in person. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Fantastic. But just want to say thank you for the presentation. There was a lot of fantastic things, but the most probably new and exciting thing that I heard about was the food scraps recycling program. That was sounds like fantastic work. I know that food waste is a very significant issue, both for climate change, but also just in terms of waste management, et cetera. So kudos to you all for tackling that.
Any other comments, questions? So as you're talking, I was doing the math backward in my head. I'm like, I'm pretty sure we've only been in school for a month and two days. I'm pretty sure. And there's rugby, you're beating Burbank, embarrassingly beating Burbank. Like, wow, I hope they don't, yeah. Hope they're working on their feelings. You got it. It's just amazing. That's a whole lot that you're doing, and I know a lot of folks are really excited about College Week. Thank you for hosting yet again. Huge event, you know, a lot of seniors from all over the district get to go and have an incredible experience. So thank you for all you do. I look forward to seeing you throughout the new year. Congratulations on both of your positions, and I look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Amaya Farias and Kira Chandler from CASA. And please correct me if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. and Ms. Cunningham. I'm Amaya Farias, a current senior and ASB president at Caseroble High School.
And I'm Kira Chandler, ASB Vice President.
A goal to cultivate an environment where students feel safe to engage in opportunities that they may or may not have experienced before is a priority and a realism at CASA. The determination to continue programs which proved effective for our students shined clear at the beginning of this year when CASA Robles Junior ROTC program engaged in a seven-day cadet leadership course where students were eyed smiling through procedures such as teams ropes course and community service. Junior ROTC began the year with great intent to aid students, and in great intent, they were not alone. As the annual AP and dual enrollment camp offered many students a free calm environment to gather advice, improve, and learn study skills for upcoming AP and dual enrollment classes. Concurrently, Link Crew got to work welcoming class of twenty twenty-eight, creating a whirlwind of excitement for the school year. In addition, CTE pathways at CASA, including agriculture, automotive, woodshop, and score, continued to introduce students to new opportunities and friends, preparing students for after high school. As CASA immersed students into our CTE programs for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four school year, seventeen female athletes chose to immerse themselves into the newly CIF-approved sport of flag football. Caseroble's flag football team played their first home game on September sixth, defeating Woodland in a nine to zero win, marking the team's first ever win in in Caserobles' woman flag football history. While the flag football players are grabbing flags, the new bass fishing club is hooking fish and won first place at the Lake Parity on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. These student-focused organizations encourage our peers and communities to support one another, making CR Rams the GOAT, the greatest of all time.
To kick off the start of the school year, student government put on the back to school rally, which reintroduces kids to the excitement and unity of cheering one another on in a battle for school spirit. Following this, the incredible Orangeville community threw the hometown rally at our local Dairy Queen, which attracted all Caseroble football fans and excited them for our very first home game, which appeared on ABC ten, CBS thirteen, and made a revenue of ten thousand dollars just on ticket sales. On September eleventh, many Caseroble students were proud to call themselves Orangeville Teen Council members at this year's first kickoff meeting. OTC is a student voice advocacy program that plans events and provides middle school and high school students more opportunity to be involved within their community. In addition, at Orangeville Teen Council, Caseroble extends student connections through youth advocacy programs at our Clubs Day event, which will be held tomorrow, September thirteenth during lunch, and will give every student the opportunity to join a club where they are free to express themselves and their opinions in a safe space. Principal Tanya Baker is continuing a new program as of last year called the Principal's Advisory Council, which focuses on giving students a voice within their academics. Caseroble students are currently looking forward to the homecoming dance and rally, which will be held September twenty-ninth and thirtieth, the football game and rally being the twenty-ninth, which you are all welcome to attend. Coming up in October, student government will be holding an event called Haunted CASA, which is a community event inviting all clubs, sports teams, and community organizations to decorate a trunk for trunk or treat. The event is open to all elementary, middle, and high school students, and also includes a haunted house, a raffle, a barbecue, and a petting zoo courtesy of FFA. Caseroble will also be advocating for the Orangeville Food Bank by having a food drive and spreading awareness to this cause. We as students are very excited to welcome Channel thirteen on campus this week as they will be filming some of our student body organizations to be broadcasted for Friday night's football game against Delora. On behalf of Caseroble, I'd like to see how wonderful it is to have the community support that we do, and that I'm proud to be part of it. Thank you, Board Members, so much for your time, and go Rams.
Thank you so much for the report. Any comments, questions from the board? Ms. Krevcheck?
I know that Ms. Creason is a fan of the goats that you guys have on campus, and she probably would be in favor of having your recruitment motto be that CASA is the goat.
We do have stickers, so we're working on it.
I want one. Um, I, thank you so much for the report. I loved hearing about it. I know many of us were chatting about the new flag football teams and how amazing the girls are. I haven't seen a game yet, but I plan to do so. And I was really, it's just fun, the types of clubs that you're coming up with. So the bass fishing club. Thank you for sharing. That's exciting. I just remembered, as you guys were talking, that Ms. Karen teaches zero period band, and it occurred to me that she deserves a reward for that in and of itself, zero period. But I didn't hear anything mentioned about band or the music program, and I just wanted to know if it launched already.
Um, yes, it has launched, and it's thriving. Band is playing at our football games, and I'm not exactly sure of any upcoming events that they have, but we do love having them on campus.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Avey?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just wanted to quickly say how excited I was to hear how many times you said community in your presentation. It seems like CASA is really embedded and thriving in the Orangevale community, in that greater community. And I think that's really important for schools to be a part of that community. And also, just to say, word to the wise, it's a really good idea to listen to Mrs. Baker. You can end up in some pretty cool places.
I agree.
Any other comments, questions? Give me, hold a second. Okay. Paula, are you good, or did you want to make comments? No pressure? Okay. Wonderful report. Again, I have to backtrack in my head. How long have you guys been in school? And I think that's very, very cool that you have a bass fishing program. I'm really excited to hear more about the OTC program as you continue to move through the year, because what an incredible resource, right?
Yes.
So often, we forget that we're peers, and we could help each other, and we rely on practitioners, and we know that there's a shortage of a variety of practitioners. So how do we help each other and support each other? It's a beautiful thing. So I would love to hear more and just how things are going as you're continuing to come and hang out with us here and here and again. And Ms. Krevcheck totally took it out of my mouth. And how are those goats?
They are great.
Yay. I'm looking forward to coming back. I know you probably don't have baby goats right now. I'm starting to get used to the seasons. Now is not the time. Fully support of the GOT language, and I will start using it myself. Also, want to just invite you, and you may already know this, but also to the Rio team. If there's events that you want to invite the board to, Ms. Cunningham is the Board Secretary, and she'll put it on our board calendar. So if there's anything that you really want us to be aware of and it ends up on the calendar, she'll take it and we'll get the information on our, you know, in front of us.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. And of course, student voice is so incredibly important to us, and the board really appreciates you taking the time to join us tonight. We know you have so much to do. So let's give them one more round of applause. And you're, of course, welcome to stay, but if you have better things to do with your time, I get it. Feel free. But of course, you're welcome to stick with us. We are now at item E three, staff reports. Mr. Kamarta?
Thank you, and good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. On June fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two, the board adopted a resolution earmarking ten million dollars for district-wide safety measures. From August of August two thousand twenty-two through February of two thousand twenty-three, Safe Schools conducted site safety assessments. On January tenth of two thousand and twenty-three, Safe Schools provided this board with a staff report on those assessments. And additionally, the Safe Schools Department reported out to the superintendent's cabinet, the facilities committee, site administration, and the city of Citrus Heights. On April twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-three, the board received a report by staff regarding the progress of the Site Safety Implementation Plan. At that safe, at that meeting, staff reviewed the safety implementation planning, including sites that were completed, sites that were semi-completed, some that were in progress due to construction, or some that were partially completed from past fencing projects. The board received information on the timeline for the fencing completion to be completed in two phases, one in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and one in the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And as of today, sites that are receiving updated fencing in the first phase, we walk those sites with site administration, with Safe Schools, with facilities, with construction management, and with our civil engineers. The remainder of that process will go in the following steps. First, our civil engineer will design the fence layouts based on those walks, provide cost estimates for the facilities division to review. The second part of that, the design layouts will be reviewed by the facility staff and also by site administration. The third part of that process is the design layouts will be sent to the site administration to review with their site safety committees, their teams, their staff, their parents, and the community to receive some of some feedback. And then finally, number four, once the designs are reviewed by all of our education partners and the applicable edits are made, we will advance those designs to the final stages, which will be the submission to the Division of the State Architect. There are three schools that are that out of the eleven that have been selected in phase one that can be expedited, and those schools include Arlington Heights, Kingswood, and Will Rogers. And the reason we can expedite those projects because they're not as complex as some of the other projects that need to be undertaken. So we'll be taking a look at that. Some of the complexities I'm talking about with some of the other school sites, or we have to do full civil site surveys, and we also have to do a full access compliance review for the American with Disabilities Act. So that takes quite a bit of time to do that, to ensure that where our school sites are accessible to to folks that need that accessibility. We can also expedite some of those projects by starting those projects in early spring after receiving some of those state architect approvals. We can do some of that work that is less disruptive around the campus, and the more disruptive work we can complete during the summer, during the summer break. In some of those cases, it's really important that we do start those earlier because, as you know, the summers get shorter. So we need a little additional time to make sure that those those projects are completed in time for school opening for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Beyond the fencing projects, as you may recall, Safe Schools recommended advice called the lock block. These lock blocks allow our schools to go into site lockdown very quickly without the use of a key, without the use of any keying device. I'll remind the board that all of our school sites do have locking devices on the interiors, either push buttons or different generations of locking devices. But this lock block will provide a good opportunity for folks to be able to lock down in a very quick fashion with it, again, without using a key or a keying device. The maintenance department did a test run on Whitney Elementary School. It went very smooth. That has been completed, and we anticipate. That has been completed, and we anticipate the completion of the lock block inst- installation to take about five or six months, uh, give or take a few months. So we'll be, uh, rapidly trying to get those completed, uh, in the net, like I said, in the next six or seven months. And with that, board members, I can take any questions that the ma- that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamara. Any questions? Ms. Krevcek.
Thank you. Just a question about the timeframe. How long for the regular, um, four-point submission and the expedited process? For the fencing?
Say one more time?
What's the timeframe from the civil engineer design layouts to submission for the regular course and then for the expedited as well?
Uh, we are hoping to get everything submitted. Uh, there's two, there's two types of processes. One is a over-the-counter review, which is a quicker one. So we get those done in November, December, get approval, and then we'll get approval probably around the February, March, uh, which is a full review by the Division of the State Architect. That allows us to have, um, uh, to go out to bid and to be able to start those, those, uh, three projects I mentioned in early spring. The others will be a, a little bit later in the spring to be completed during the summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Other comments, questions? Just one question. Thank you so much. It's so wonderful to hear about the projects moving forward, because I know safety is paramount to so many, including me. Um, I think what would be helpful just to wrap my head around what you just said, when it makes sense not to create work for the team, but if there's a spreadsheet or a list that just can identify which schools are, um, getting, you know, getting a fence or engaging in the fencing project, that would be really helpful, just to wrap my head around who's getting what. Oh, perfect.
I have that list, and I can send that to you.
I would love that. I think you have my email.
I do, yes.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, thank you so much for the report.
Uh, thank you.
Did you? We are at item E7, closed session expulsion actions. Mr. Hernandez.
The board voted unanimously to accept the hearing panel's recommendation on, of one denied enrollment in case number zero S dash zero one.
Thank you. We are at, at item F, visitor comments. We do have speaker cards for general visitor comments. Comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda, so we're not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. Ms. Rye, please facilitate public comment.
Of course. Our first speaker is Gemma, followed by B.J. Combs. Gemma, you can head to the podium.
Hi, um, my name is Gemma, and, um, I would like to tell you about my experience from San Juan. Um, my experience was not the best, because when, um, I would, um, I'm sorry, uh. Um, that when I was wearing, um, a different type of mask, that, uh, it had a open window on the top, and then, um, my teacher grabbed me and said that, um, I was not wearing it right, and that.
I can't go hug her, but. You did so good.
She just wanted to tell you about her experience wearing the masks and how she felt discriminated against. Thank you.
Our, our next speaker is B.J. Combs, followed by Ross Gallagher.
Good evening, President Creason, Superintendent Bassinelli, and board members. I live about six blocks from Barrett Elementary. I'm not Barrett Elementary, but Barrett Middle School now. And, uh, I just want to say thank you for a job well done, uh, renovating the school. It's, I've lived there for 20 years, and it's remarkable the changes you've made. Um, I'd like to make a suggestion. At some point, either this fall or later next spring, I'd, I'd encourage you to have an open house and invite the neighbors that live in the community that drive past the school every day, that have waited for the trucks to get their work, loads unloaded and everything like that. But we'd like to see what's happened inside as well. If it looks as good inside as it does outside, it's a gem, and you should be really proud of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have Ross Gallagher, followed by Nancy Brown Pelly.
Hello, President Creason, Board Trustees, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Ross Gallagher. I'm a school counselor over at Sylvan Middle School. This is currently my fourth year over at Sylvan. As a counselor at a middle school, we serve all students by providing and promoting both academic achievement and social emotional wellbeing for all of our students. Myself and my counseling partner utilize Naviance to make sure that students are exploring colleges, careers, and themselves. I believe it is our role to create a safe space for all students to feel welcome and supported while they are at school, a place where students can explore what makes them who they are. I am one of the WEB coordinators also on campus. WEB stands for Where Everybody Belongs. We have implemented WEB with the goal of creating a positive school culture and climate on our campus. Through WEB, we have seen more positive climate in our school. Kids are feeling safe, included, and excited about the school year and going to a lot more of our events as well. As school staff, we have seen the change being established with all of the supports that are being offered. Establishing a culture and climate of everybody belonging is the most important quality to creating a safe environment for our kiddos. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Next, we have Nancy Brown Pelly, followed by Laura Fierro.
Hello, President Creason, Board Trustees, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Nancy Brown Pelly, and I am a middle years teacher at Woodside TKA School. I've been teaching for well over 20 years. I'm pretty sure I stopped counting around 15. This is my ninth year in the wonderful San Juan Unified School District. It has been a pleasure to serve in this district. As an educator, I strive to create an environment of safety, trust, and collaboration in my classroom to afford each student the space and grace to become the best they can be. I wanted to share that Woodside K A, TKA is very excited to have been chosen as an innovative school. The design team, in collaboration with our new administrators, Beth Wall and Deborah, Deborah Johnson, who are goats, by the way, are cultivating a culture of excellence that supports innovative teaching and thinking. We have many clubs that are including all of our students, and we believe that safety inclusiveness are of the utmost importance at our school. We are so excited about our journey as an innovative school, and we hope you continue to follow our progress. Thank you.
Next, we have Laura Fierro, followed by Puni Holst.
Hello, everyone. I'm just keep this, um, short. Thank you for taking time to listen. My name is Laura Fierro, and I'm a credentialed teacher librarian, and I've worked over at the library at Rio Americano High School for eight years. Um, I just wanted to give you a few details of some issues that I've had, um, we've had in the library with the renovation process that our site was involved in over the past year. We got new furniture and carpeting at Rio, and that included our library area. I was not consulted at all regarding the library furniture. Instead, I was told what library furniture and shelving we would be receiving. I was repeatedly rebuffed when I tried to give any input as to the furniture and shelving that the district ordered and purchased to be placed in our library. As a result, I now have over 35 boxes of books with no shelving. This means that students do not have access to over 1,000 academic and reading resources. Especially concerning me is how we continue to be out of compliance with California School Library standards regarding our minimal book collection. And when I brought up the fact that we have no shelving for all of those boxes of books, I was told by district representatives to get rid of books. The new shelving has created numerous safety problems. The shelves are bowing and unsteady from the weight of the books. Books are falling off the shelves, et cetera. This presents a real hazard to anyone browsing through the stacks. Our previous shelving was completely adequate for the books that we had, and we're only five years old, yet that shelving was removed and discarded unnecessarily. In regards to this recent renovation, I've been advocating for our library space for over a year now to no avail. I've gone through the chain of command at our school site and in the district, presented facts, figures, documentation, and pictures, and even offered solutions to this furniture problem, but there's been no resolution. I'm trying to do what's right for the students, our school library, and the other school libraries in our district that have had the same experience. I invite you to our library to judge for yourselves. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Next, we have Puni Holst.
Do I just start?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Puni Holst. I'm a parent at Rio Americano High School of a high school junior, and I'm here to complain about my experience at Rio Americano with the class schedules and what students have experienced, but I'll refer mostly to my son. One, the master calendar that was created has been a very difficult for kids to, um, navigate as well as for counseling staff to be able to help provide the classes that students were requesting. Two, um, the lack of counseling support with the master calendar and kids asking for particular classes, especially when they were scheduled incorrectly, has been very difficult. Um, th- there's been a lack of AP classes available this year, and as well as, um, I'm concerned about actually overall the academic achievement goals set for the school and for the students who desire to achieve as, and go as far as possible. Um, when AP classes were unavailable, the Counseling Center and the school did not offer options for junior college classes and did not provide guidance or support for that. And, um, the way kids and parents were updated if classes were available or unavailable did not happen regularly. I actually had to go in, and I know other parents who had to go into the Counseling Center to get the support their kid needed. The lack of AP classes this year has been low. There were three AP US History classes last year. There are only two this year, and there were a lot of kids on a waitlist. My other concern is that my, that for two years in a row, the AP physics teacher has not completed the academic coursework, and I'm not sure what the plan is for this year. And I've also asked the school, the Counseling Center teacher principal for the AP score, not the scores, eight, the number of students who passed the AP exams for the high school, Rio Americano, over the last three years, so I can determine whether or not the classes there are adequate for mine. I have more of it. Thank you.
And President Creason, that's our final general visitor comment.
I'm sorry.
That was, that was our final general visitor comment.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank everyone for your comments. We are at item G, consent calendar. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Are you none? Is there a motion to approve items G1 through G6? Moved by Ms. Costa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Krevcek, all those in, oh. We will do a roll call vote. Ms. Krevcek.
Aye.
Ms. Viescas.
Aye.
Mr. Ravy.
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez.
Aye.
Ms. Costa.
Aye.
And I vote aye, that was unanimous. We are at item I1, Anti-Bias Education Grant Program. Dr. Calvin.
Good evening, President Creason. Members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, that's not.
I don't think so. We're fixing it.
Try it again, Deb.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll start again. Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board receive information on the content of the recently awarded Anti-Bias Education Grant Program, which is funded by the California Department of Education. Director of Equity Omar Phil Ridley will provide an overview, overview of the grant, discuss our planned use of the funds, and will clearly articulate what the grant is and isn't.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to share some additional information about this anti-bias grant. So this is our why for the grant. It's our students and the level of importance we place on creating spaces of belonging. We know from our own climate and culture survey, from the listening sessions that we facilitate, the discussions that we have had and continue to have with all educators, but more specifically, the site leaders and teachers who support students every day and recognize that ex- that an expectation for academic success occurs when it is built on a foundation where at a minimum, students feel welcome, valued.
Just a moment.
Okay.
If. You want to keep going, well, oh, it's back.
Okay, um, where students feel welcome, valued, connected, and included, so they can be empowered to become the best versions of themselves, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender identity, or sexual orientation. In summary, our ability to create a community of belonging is paramount to building a community of excellence. Some of the primary challenges to building that community are listed here and have been reflected in our climate culture survey, numerous listening sessions, and the work of many throughout the district to identify root causes in order to address them. What the data shows us is that discriminatory actions, prejudice, marginalization, and other, and othering, which is excluding, uh, and making others to feel as if they don't belong, are having a profound impact on students. Unfortunately, it is likely that this data represents an issue that is even larger than is depicted on this slide, as many students often suffer in silence. It's a difficult, if not impossible, to create a culture of climate, a culture and climate of belonging when acts of discrimination and racism are telling students that at times they are on their own in their efforts to counteract these barriers to belonging. When a swastika is spray painted at an elementary school, when students don't understand the impact of the N-word and use it indiscriminately with each other and ateat each other, and homophobic slurs are used to bully and ridicule students, when students are blocked, physically blocked, from accessing certain spaces on campus or access to resources, when racial and ethnic tensions lead to confrontation and physical violence. When these things happen, we have to improve the way that we counteract and interrupt, and we have to take steps to improve the way that we communicate. Because the students who experience discrimination and marginalization do not get to embrace the positives that school has to offer. And those who witness it, if we have to ask ourselves, well, what we have to ask ourselves is if those are the lessons that we want them to learn. So what is anti-bias? We pursue this grant on the premise that anti-bias means to be focused on reducing or eliminating biases, prejudice, and discriminatory behaviors based on, but not limited to, race, gender, age, sexual orientation, disability, and religion. In the context of the anti-bias grant, this understanding of what anti-bias means shapes the actions, efforts, and strategies that aid in reducing and eliminating biases, prejudices, and discriminatory behaviors for the purpose of further developing our community of belonging in our district. The specific, the specifics of the grant are identified here. In summary, on August 30th, received notification that we had been offered the maximum award of $200,000 for this three-year statewide grant. The rationale and parameters for this grant, as articulated by the California Department of Education, are to confront hate, bigotry, and racism in our schools and connect, and connect to communities. Using these grant guidelines as a framework, we crafted an approach that refrains from allocating any funding for professional development or curriculum while also supporting our most marginalized students. As a result, our focus is on building a network of existing educators who can effectively support and partner with students and staff to combat, combat hate, bigotry, racism, and other forms of bias, prejudice, and marginalization as equity liaisons and identity club advisors. Our equity liaisons will be site-based educators who work with site leadership, site-based teams, staff, teachers, and. Our equity liaisons will be site-based educators who work with site leadership, site-based teams, staff, teachers, and students to support these here listed primary components and reach these here expected outcomes. Their scope of work will be described on the following slide, but in short, we anticipate that their efforts will improve our abilities to identify and track potentially critical incidents more quickly, interrupt them before they escalate, respond more effectively when they do escalate, and accrue accurate data throughout the school so that we can respond more appropriately and intentionally in the future. Our identity club advisors are site-based educators who have volunteered to work with students during their lunchtimes and after school for the purpose of creating an increased number of safe spaces to talk, voice concerns, honor lived experiences, and develop a sense of belonging and community. This is the scope of work for the two positions that we would fund over the next three years. Stated previously, our equity liaisons are site-based educators who volunteer to take on extra responsibility by working with site leadership and site-based teams. Stated in the Section 3B of the grant, which focuses on past equity efforts by San Juan Unified, our equity liaisons previously provided professional development, which was discontinued at the end of the 2021-2022 school year. This grant provides us with an opportunity to establish new and expanded roles for our liaisons. And as a result, our liaisons will support the eight-point commitment, represent their site at district and department meetings, be a positive collaborative and solution-oriented member for their site, be the liaison between the site and the equity department, collect site-based data regarding discriminatory actions, prejudice, marginalization, hate speech, and othering, and then what's listed in this box as well. Our identity club advisors will support the eight-point commitment by creating safe space for students, empowering students to develop communication, leadership, self-advocacy skills through listening sessions and surveys, collaborating regularly with site equity liaisons and the advisor network, and improving the reach and impact of student voice in our system. So with data collection, we have identified six ways to measure the impact of this plan. Much of this responsibility falls under the purview of our equity liaisons. Data collection duties will include climate surveys, staff and student listening sessions, equity liaison and identity club advisor observations, tracking meeting attendance, tracking student participation in identity club meetings, and articulating specific site needs. The equity department will also work to accrue student discipline and attendance data once a data accrual platform has been developed. So in summary, I'd like to clearly articulate that this grant does not allocate any money to professional development or curricular purchases, nor do the individuals in either of the positions provide professional development. Rather, it will provide volunteer opportunities for identity club advisors and site equity liaisons to support their sites. It is aligned to our eight-point commitment. It supports lunch and after-school identity clubs. It expands our ability to collect data around some of the biggest impacts to student success. It improves communication feedback loops within school sites, between schools, and the district. It aligns to the requirement of the CDE grant, which states the grant program is to prevent, address, and eliminate bias and make all public schools inclusive and supportive of all people and all students. We believe that we have crafted a plan that would allow us to do those things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for the report and information. We do have public comments. I'd like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. Ms. Rye, please facilitate public comment.
Of course. First, we have Ashley Freer, followed by Danisha Bland.
I am here today as a parent of a student in the district and also as a local lead for Moms Demand Action. So I'm going to be talking about my perspective from the Moms Demand Action today, and I'm sure there are many other voices that will provide other perspectives. As stated in Everytown's research-based article, "How to Stop Shootings and Gun Violence in Schools", which you all have in your email, fostering a safe and trusting school climate is one of the key recommendations in the plan to keep schools and students safe. Supportive and trusting schools are the strongest way to prevent school violence. When we focus on student well-being, we create conditions to prevent school shootings and other violence. The evidence shows that most school shooters are current or former students and that they nearly always show warning signs. We also know that gun violence in schools has a disproportionate impact on students of color. Anti-bias education is critical to school violence prevention. When diversity is not valued or respected, harmful behaviors like bullying and violence emerge. We know that in our school district, there is a significant increase in racial tensions and discrimination against marginalized students groups. Preventing, addressing, and eliminating racism and bias in our schools creates an inclusive and supportive school environment. Students thrive in positive school environments. Safe schools are built on trusting relationships among students, staff, and administration. An anti-bias approach fosters these positive relationships and provides an inclusive, welcoming environment for all members of our community. Our schools are the heart of our community. Our kids need to learn in environments that make them feel safe, valued, and connected. Accepting this grant to fund anti-bias education shows our commitment to being a more inclusive, diverse, and equitable school district, and it is critical to preventing school violence. Please approve this grant.
Next, we have Danisha Bland, followed by Lynn Berkeley Baskin.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Danisha Bland. I am the Associate Director of SIS, Sacramento Area Youth Speaks, which is an outreach program from UC Davis that empowers youth to become change agents of their own lives. And I'm here today as a community partner with the Equity Department since 2015 to stress the importance of funding the anti-bias grant. You know, as San Juan stresses the importance of their rich tradition of helping students find academic success, it's important that we fund this grant now more than ever. When we have students complaining about discrimination, hate, things like that, it is especially important that we look to our community partners and our programs to contribute to help a student. When you think about a student's academic success, you must take into consideration their social and emotional well-being. If a student does not feel safe on campus, if a student feels like they're being discriminated on campus, there's no way they're going to be able to get to academic success. It is proven for a student to succeed academically, they must be able to get their social and emotional needs met. And programs such as SIS, Project Optimism, Black Youth Leadership Project, and UCAN are programs that specializes in these type of things that help students. When you focus on a student's social and emotional well-being, then you can also get to academic success. And so I just really want to stress the importance. As the district is ever-changing, our communities are ever-changing, we must take in consideration our Title I schools such as Encina, KJ, that need some extra support, and with this grant, we can continue that extra support. Thank you.
Next, we have Lynn Berkeley Baskin, followed by Bina Lefkovitz.
Good evening, residents of the district, school district, employees, and board members. I speak this evening on behalf of President Betty Williams of the Greater Sacramento NAACP and as the Community Outreach Chair of the Jewish Community Relations Council. Together, these two organizations serve tens of thousands of local voting residents. Under my hat with the NAACP, I commissioned then Professor Luke Wood and his team at Black Minds Matter and Community College Equity Assessment Lab to look at school exclusionary outcomes for black boys, the Capital of Suspensions Report. Many area districts realigned and responded based on that report, but this district was already on top of it. San Juan Unified was one of a handful of districts in the state that led school inclusion by creating a position that actually analyzes pathways of exclusion and tracked it based on race and other identity measures. They were eager to develop a communication pathway to community-based groups impacted by hate-based happenings on or near school premises. They engaged the Central Valley Holocaust Educator Network to help teach about genocide and which symbols are used as tools of hate. San Juan also created the Equity Collaborative, which we've already heard about. This district is developing a deep understanding of power, who's had a long time and how it's been, I'm sorry, understanding of power, who's had a long time and how it's been communicated, who doesn't have it, who and how power needs to be shared, and is taking note of who doesn't want to share it. The practice of anti-bias education and supports, sorry, the NAACP and Jewish Community Relations Council is unwavering in our support for the practice of anti-bias education and supports all grants and budget allocations that seek to embed equity and inclusion that fosters social, emotional, and academic excellence.
Next, we have Bina Lefkovitz, followed by April Bean.
Good evening, President Creason, School Board Trustees, and Superintendent. I am Bina Lefkovitz. I am not here today as your county school board trustee, but I am here as a community resident. I urge the board to stay the course on your DEI efforts, including this anti-bias work. This will increase student connection to school and improve attendance and academic outcomes. DEI is important to me because I am the mom of a young man who came out senior year. His family and high school supported him, but not all students have had that experience. Many face bias and stigma. Hence, suicide rates are four times that for gay and trans kids than for other students. DSA clubs can positively impact school climate and reduce suicide rates. DEI is important to me because I am Jewish. My temple was firebombed 20 years ago, and sadly, we now have locked gates, cameras, and security guards to keep us safe. When we see swastikas in our schools and our communities, we do not feel safe. Anti-Semitism is real for our Jewish children. DEI is important to me as my son-in-law is Cuban. His family fleeing Cuba in the dark of night during the revolution. He beat the odds, unlike many immigrant children who face bias, low expectations, and lack of opportunities in their schools. DEI is important to build interfaith and intercultural awareness. As a member of the Sisters of Salam Shalom, a Jewish and Muslim women's group working together to tear down the walls of ignorance and hate, contact theory proves that we cannot hate people whose stories you know, a part of anti-bias training. Please continue to support anti-bias and DEI efforts. Thank you.
Next, we have April Bean, followed by Maxine.
Good evening. My name is April Bean. I'm a concerned homeschool parent of two students in the San Juan district, and I'm also a 21-year veteran of the public schools as a teacher here in California. Tonight, I'm here specifically to address the Anti-Bias Education Grant Program that you plan to vote on tonight. For those of you who are not aware, the cultural Marxists who have infiltrated our government and government schools have stolen our language in an attempt to obfuscate the truth of their agenda. Stealing and distorting the language is the means by which they are able to convince otherwise sane and rational people to agree to things that they would otherwise not agree to. Now, I don't have time to go through a list of the many ways that this has already taken place in our nation, but I can tell you that this anti-bias grant is not, in fact, intended to reduce or prevent any sort of bias from taking place in our schools. In fact, quite the opposite. Just look at the data collection that the gentleman mentioned. It's an agenda. If anything, the funds from this grant will be used to encourage students to stay focused on how they are victims of hate by creating identity clubs that do nothing but divide vulnerable students based on race, gender, and sexual preferences rather than uniting them. So let's just get real here for a second. Our San Juan schools are not doing so well academically. Our students can't read, and they're falling behind. And if this is truly an institution of learning, why isn't the board laser-focused on bringing our students up to grade-level proficiency instead of adding clubs that will further fracture student morale and cohesiveness? Furthermore, I am a little concerned about and would like to know more about if the board members in support of the anti-bias grant have considered how the leaders of all these identity clubs will be vetted. Are they all going to be background-checked, and are you going to be willing to be liable for any abuse that may happen to these vulnerable children? So thank you very much for your time, and I ask you to vote your conscience tonight.
Next, we have Maxine, followed by Debbie.
Good evening. I am, is that working? Okay. I am a member of the community. I happen to be sitting with a lot of people that are in education. But as a member of the community, I am aware of what's happening against, by the anti-bias program. I hope it works. But there are people out here in our region that are against the children, really, thinking that reporting, that making the board members or schoolteachers reporting children that are gay to the parents is absolutely not fair. These parents do not know their children. If teachers need to report to the parents what the child is like. That's all I have to say, is this is something that's going on. I'm aware of what happened in north of us in with Hupp. She is some kind of board member, and she's calling for Christian members. This is not necessarily a Christian community. We have all religions here, and I don't agree with that board. I think it's in the Roseville area. I'm not sure. Rancho Cudovah? No. Rockland, thank you very much. Yes, and that is totally wrong. And I'm here just to represent wanting to stop that movement, and I hope that you all succeed with the anti-bias movement, because that sounds wonderful to me. Thank you.
Next, we have Debbie, followed by Catherine Mirage. Debbie?
Good evening, board. I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be. I heard about this meeting about 4 o'clock this afternoon. So I'd really like to just jump in and let you know that about three months ago, I saw an article in the news that the International Monetary Fund, which is over the World Bank and, you know, lots of countries, they announced that in order to borrow money, the nations have to sign up for the diversity, inclusion, equity programs. All the companies, the corporations, they all have to sign on to this agenda. I just want you to know that this grant, which I totally support the ideal, I've been involved in nonviolent communication and recovery from codependency and healthy and loving relationships for over 30 years. I just wanted you to know that I'm watching this agenda coming down from top down. Totalitarianism is a fear. We have had countries where they've had genocide, and all of these fears are very emotional. We have, I've watched this community. We are a community. Separating into little separated clubs isn't going to bring the community together. But if you would bring in the beautiful program of nonviolent communication, they have been doing this work out of Oakland for over 25 years, where we identify feelings and needs and how to get those needs met. But when I ask you tonight, please do not notice anything in this room that is blue. Stop. Do not notice anything in this room that is blue. That is all you will see. Thank you.
Next, we have Catherine Mirage, followed by Susan Zimmer.
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. I am here tonight as the sensory integration and adaptive communication teacher at Arcade Middle School, formerly known as an autism teacher, because that's not what I teach. I teach students how to manage their sensory needs and how to communicate when they don't talk, when they can't get up in front of us. talk, when they can't get up in front of us and put together sentences in a way to communicate their thoughts, wants, and needs. I want to read to you from Governor Newsom on the Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week. He states, "Every Californian with disabilities deserves to be included as a valued member of the community. I value each and every one of you. I value each and every person who has come up to speak so far and who will come up to speak because they have a voice. I teach the 1% who don't have a voice. I would like you to consider supporting this so that we can show students there are many ways to have a voice, many ways to communicate their wants, needs, and ideas." Because I sit every day with the students who can't, and that is the main thing I teach in my curriculum. So if you need to come down and see what the worst is, what the hard end of the spectrum is, please come see my classroom.
Next, we have Susan Zimmer, followed by Jeff DeLan.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I have not been a Sacramento resident all my life. I lived in the Bay Area, and I had a career as a eighth-grade middle school teacher, a board member in a neighboring district, Campbell Union School District, and as a principal. And I just have to say, I hope that you accept the superintendent's recommendation to take the money and do with it as you can for every student in the district. Exclusion, in my experience, has never worked, and the more that we can accept and include and acknowledge, and I so appreciate the comment by the woman who said that we can't hate people whose stories we don't know. And I think to move forward with that, any opportunity we have, even though it's exciting to get $200,000, it's a drop in the bucket, but I'm excited about what it looks like is going to happen with that money. And I hope this board will unanimously accept a grant that our governor, our state, our educators have gotten behind and have said that it will be good for all of our students, every student. We have to move forward, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, we have Jeff DeLan, followed by Bill Simmons.
President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli. I've lived in the San Juan District for decades, and my children and grandchildren have attended school here, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. I believe that the core charge of the San Juan Unified School District is to offer to all of our students the best education we can possibly provide them and to provide every student with equal access to that education. That equal access is provided only if the district respects these students for who they are and makes them feel that they belong. When we allow students to be marginalized or to feel that they are less than because they are Black or Jewish or Latino or LGBT, those students are denied that equal access to education, and the district has failed them. One other point I'd like to make is that anyone who takes on the role of a teacher or administrator in the district is agreeing to become part of that effort to assist the district in its purpose of providing equal education to every student in the district. And I hope that, would hope that teachers and administrators alike would take advantage of the opportunity this program offers to be part of that effort and to bring everybody into the fold so that all of our students can receive the same quality education. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Bill Simmons, followed by Chris Gressons.
President Creason, members of the board. I'm Bill Simmons, a taxpayer and voter in the district for over 35 years. With all due respect, some of you need to do a better job preparing for your meetings. At the last meeting, some of you said, and I quote, "This training is structured to create bias," or "I haven't looked into the grant," or "I'm not aware of this grant." Shame on you. You get the board packet several days before the meeting. If any of you had contacted Superintendent Bassinelli or Dr. Calvin and asked questions, you would have known that this grant does not provide training or curriculum, but it support work, it supports work that is already happening in the district. This was on the consent calendar to access $200,000 from the state to support current programs. If you ask Chief Financial Officer Stahlheber, she will tell you that the district cannot afford to just give away $200,000 to make a political statement. I have been to all 64 schools and met with students in these clubs. If you want to understand what this grant will support, attend some meetings with students after school. You will find out that the BSU or the Pride PAC provides social, emotional, and mental health supports that keep kids in school. You wasted, you wasted a lot of staff time to prepare the dog and pony show that was presented here tonight. The taxpayers in San Juan do not want a political board. Your job is to be nonpartisan and focus on the 39,000 students of San Juan. If you want to be political, go to Rockland to Mexico, Chino, or Texas. The voters will remember, the voters will remember what, how you vote tonight.
Good evening, Board members and fellow neighbors. I'm here in support of this grant educational program. My name is Chris Gressons. I'm a husband, father, and physician in the Carmichael community. I was encouraged to attend this meeting after reading the op-ed piece by City Council Member Katie Valenzuela's op-ed piece in the Sacramento Bee. And just as an aside, please support the Free Press, so very essential to the nature of our nation. More specifically, I'm supporting well-designed anti-bias education programs such as this one. They're essential to healthy, safe, happy, and constructive communities. Only through such essential education could we accomplish the following five goals. Number one, getting a handle on the hateful vitriol that too often these days pervades many educational experiences. While we cannot expunge these problems completely, programs like this can go a long way towards making that happen. Number two, supporting the development of a fair and level playing field for students of all backgrounds irrespective of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, and the many other and varied features of merely being a human being. Number three, avoiding the censorship of educational content for misplaced religious or alleged moral reasons. Religion often is a beautiful unifying force, but please help us keep any overt and sometimes ill-conceived worship of religion outside of our public schools and governments. It does not belong there. Number four, respecting science and the manner that challenges theories objectively and not with political intent. And finally, number five, supporting education that leads to safe, healthy, happy, and successful lives. In short, please make this happen, and for good measure, let's also continue to do all we can to be good and kind to one another. That's a principle against which I believe no one can truly hold a bias. Thank you.
Next, we have Sarah Thompson, followed by Karen Roberts.
Hi. Thank you so much for having, giving us this opportunity to speak to this important issue. I'm here to support the grant for anti-bias, and I want to speak to my own bias as the executive director of the Sacramento Kindness Campaign. We created a program a year ago to help unhoused children in greater Sacramento with their families who are referred to us by school districts. And building this program a year ago, I knew that we were going to have to provide a lot of nights of shelter, and I worked with local hotels. And I was nervous, what was I going to do when somebody didn't want to check out on time, or if they smoked in a room or took a pillow, or if they made charges? So I talked with the hotels, and we kind of came up with a plan. But a year later, after we've helped more than 50 families, we've helped 26 families to become permanently housed, including nine San Juan Unified families. And I want to tell you that after 360 nights, not a single homeless family has smoked in a room, not one. No one has checked out late, not a single pillow has walked out. There have been no damages out of 360 nights. So why was I so afraid that there would be this type of an outcome just because these families were homeless? It was because of my own bias. And so I want to talk about well-intending community members who are wrong, who need some education. And this $200,000 is, as so many incredible speakers before me, it is a drop in the bucket, but we all could take a look in the mirror and realize that we don't want to have bias, a lack of opportunities, low expectations. We want equal access for our families. And so I plead, I hope you'll vote for this. Thank you so much for taking my words into consideration.
Next, we have Karen Roberts, followed by Cornell Anton.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Karen Roberts. I'm the parent of a K-12 district student who graduated from Rio Americano High School the year that the swastika appeared on the baseball field. And I support this anti-bias measure because the district's mission is to empower all in an inclusive learning community, and it values belonging with genuine respect for diverse cultures, identities, and abilities. I ask, why would the district, or any other school district forfeit its share of California's $20 million anti-bias education grant, which is designed to help prevent, prevent, address, and eliminate racism and bias in our public schools? Are there any members on this board representing people in our community that believe we don't need to prevent, address, and eliminate racism and bias in our world, let alone our schools? Strong opinions, no experience, and no interest in learning ends conversations before they can begin. I believe the district grant application, the district staff created, submitted to the state, and further explained in the board packets illustrates a well-justified application with realistic proposed activities designed to help reduce racism, hate, bigotry, and other forms of bias, prejudice, and marginalization in our schools. And I'm completely dumbfounded as to what rationale there could possibly be for opposing the acceptance and implementation of this grant on behalf of our children. I hope you will all consider voting A on this agenda item. Thank you.
Next, we have Cornell Anton, followed by Andrea Hedstrom.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Cornell. I'm a friend of Tanya's. I'm here tonight to support my good friend Tanya. We both have similar backgrounds. We both grew up in, well, our parents in foreign countries. We immigrated here when we were young. We grew up under communist oppression and intimidation. My parents used to speak about intimidation and bullying that happened in Romania, where Romanian Pentecostals. And a lot of times in schools, they would talk about anti-bias, about accepting everybody, but it actually quite happened, quite the opposite most of the time, and we're afraid that's what's going to happen with this program. Tanya stood up for her common sense Christian values, and what did the Sacramento Bee do? Somebody mentioned it back there. They wrote a hit piece and included Tanya in it. They tried to intimidate and bully her, even though she has a freedom of speech, she could vote as she likes to. And the Sacramento Bee, they did not report it accurately. They just, they did like a very biased hit piece on her. This is the same media outlet that called Rockland School District fanatical. Just believe that, fanatical for passing a regulation where teachers have to notify their parents if there's something going on with their kids, which is not, it's not radical, that's not a fanatical, that's common sense. Can you guys please respect me back there? So these programs are actually full of hate. They're reeducation programs. They're very biased. And the doctor here, he did not provide details how they're going to accomplish this. It's like a used car salesman. They just say, oh yeah, the winter's weapon, now we got leather and all this, but they don't give you the details about how their programs are implemented. What are you going to do after the $200,000 runs out? How do you audit this program? Who's responsible for that? Do I end up doing more harm than good? We actually saw this in my home country, Romania, where a lot of these programs existed. The communists were really good with us, which is exactly, this program, you know, all right, thank you.
Next, we have Andrea Hedstrom, followed by Laureen Pryor.
Hi. My name is Andrea Hedstrom, and I am the wife of a San Juan Unified Public School teacher, as well as the mother of four children who formerly attended school in the San Juan Unified School District. I also want to mention that I am a lifelong Democrat who is pro-marriage equality. That said, I want to specifically thank Tanya Kravchuk for her advocacy on behalf of children within the school, the San Juan Unified School District. As a mother of four children, as a mother of four whose children did formerly attend San Juan public schools and who are now currently being home-educated, I want to speak about my growing concern that top-down state curriculum and specifically decisions being made by the state legislature and governor seem to be interfering with the role of school boards to be able to make decisions at the local level by people within the community, including involved parents and the very school board members that we elect to represent us. And I say this as a longtime Democrat. From Rockland to Chino Valley and other school boards across the state, my perspective is that parents want to have influence and say over what is being taught to their children in schools. Involved parents are not the enemy. Rather, involved parents are the most important allies that schools and teachers have. I also want to say that as an entirely nonreligious person, that I might have some perspective on why this anti-bias training could be questionable due to the sections on gender. As I said earlier, as a longtime Democrat who is pro-marriage equality, I feel compelled to express my enormous concerns that children are being exposed at younger and younger ages to gender ideology and to even sexually explicit content. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Laureen Pryor, followed by Lisa Stanley.
Good evening. There you go. Hey. Good evening, Laureen Pryor with Black Youth Leadership Project, a community partner of San Juan. And as I'm listening to the things that are going forth, I did not write anything, but I'm just going to tell you what I'm hearing. You have a lot of folks who have a difference of opinion. However, none of that matters because we all have to figure out a way to work together. Now, we hearing things about unity. Children who share the background that I have have not felt a unity on your campuses. There has always been some sort of pervasive wanting to belong. You do not see teachers who look like you. You do not see administrators who look like you. And so when you're talking about bringing money that's not coming out of your general fund, right? You're getting money from an outside source to help you deal with belongingness on your campus, that is critical. Our children are being put out of your schools at astronomical rates. I think the last report I saw, 13.3%, right? They're not even 13.3% of your population. So there is something wrong with the climate in your institutions. Because when I go to your schools to advocate, I ask, are the, are Black children doing something differently than their counterparts? And I am told, no. What you will see, if you look at the research, it says that they are hyper-focused on why? Because there is a bias. And so when you enact anti-bias education, you give children who look like me a fighting chance. And so I wholeheartedly support this, and I hope that you will too. Our kids need to feel connected. They need to feel included. No one needs to be ostracized for how they are. We have to figure out how to work together, and it starts by trying to get an understanding of who each other are. Thank you.
President Creason, we have hit our 30 minutes of public comment on this item.
Okay. Hold out for just a second. Per Board bylaw 9323, that concludes the 30-minute time limit. There are still, how many public comments?
About 10.
About 10?
Yeah.
There's still 10, about 10 people who wish to make public comment. Do board members have an interest in extending the time for visitor comments? Okay, is there a motion to extend visitor comment for another 30 minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moved by Mr. Avey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hernandez. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Krupcheck?
Aye.
Ms. Vieskis?
Aye.
Mr. Avey?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Costa? And I vote aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, next we have Lisa Stanley, followed by David Martesian.
Hi, my name is Lisa Stanley, and I'm a student advocate with Black Youth Leadership Project. The harm that I've seen inflicted on black students on campuses across this region and state are simply disgusting. The level of blatant racism that goes on on campus, campuses has to be stopped. We, as a community, have to do better. San Juan is one of the few districts who are really putting the action behind the buzzwords. For that, we thank you. It brings some relief to the fight BYLP has been trying to combat, the disproportionate discipline rates for black students. I'm in full support of the anti-bias education grant. And as mentioned before, it's two hundred thousand, right? It's, it's pennies. The grant is supportive of inclusive environments for all. Now, why would anyone be against that unless they themselves are part of the problem which makes these spaces needed in the first place? I challenge everyone to ask yourself, what are you teaching in your households that all students don't feel safe? Racism and hatred are taught in your homes. Look inside yourself and figure out why, what truth you can't face about your ancestors' wrongs because you are sure living off their wealth and privilege, which was built on the backs of blacks. It must be nice to live in La La Land and not see the discrimination, bias, and absolute hate that goes on in the real world. But I choose to live in reality. I choose every day to use my complexion to confront peers, colleagues, family, and whoever else is still spewing ignorance. I will continue to speak up for what's right and give our black babies a voice.
Next, we have David Martesian, followed by Victoria Whitney.
Good evening, Board President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli. I don't have a whole lot prepared. I appreciate you guys extending the time. I'm a father of two kids that go to San Juan or attend San Juan School District. I myself attended elementary through high school in San Juan. And I urge you to support this grant. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Victoria Whitney, followed by Serissa Brown.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Whitney, and I'm also here to encourage you to support this grant. I live in the district. Merrilloma is my home school for my kids. My daughter graduated from the IB program with an IB diploma from Merrilloma. While she was there, one of her classmates came out as gay to his parents and hung himself in their family garage the following day. After she graduated, one of the students there, who was being bullied for being gay, shot himself and killed himself on campus. I spent many years working for the state of California. I ran the water quality program and the water rights program in the state at different times. We had similar training to this at my office, and I started looking around at who the supervisors were, who reported to me. We had one black guy. He was a geologist, and one openly gay guy out of about a hundred and fifty employees that I managed. That got me thinking. So I went to UC Davis, which is my alma mater, and I sent a note to the chancellor asking how to increase diversity. And what I found out is we weren't hiring people because we didn't get applicants who met the job criteria. People don't meet the job criteria. We, we hire scientists and engineers mostly. People don't meet the job criteria graduating in those programs because they don't have a lot of kids going into the university in those programs. And then I read in the paper about two black girls at Merrilloma who dropped out of the IB program because they were being harassed. I'd like to close by letting you know that two hundred thousand dollars is cheap. And if you get complaints or a lawsuit against you, it's going to help save your butts. That's it.
Next, we have Serissa Brown, followed by Irina Gyanenko. Serissa Brown?
Hi, my name's Serissa Brown. I have two children that are, I might cry. But this is a very sensitive topic. I have a child who was denied education, faith for eleven years. He's in eleventh grade. He writes and reads at a second to third grade level because his race was used to justify why he cannot be assessed for disabilities to prevent him to learn to read and write because of the Larry P versus Riles. That part is not talked about in discrimination, anti-racist, and anti-bias. And I think that needs to be discussed. I left seventeen page of documents proving with all your letterheads denying him education because of his race. So I left it with them. So I just wanted to bring attention to you. And then I think we have to focus on the board and our obligation to focus on addressing educational needs and not social justice. That is a political agenda that takes the core focus away from educational needs. That's why we're here, is because we're a school. We're school boards with thirty, thirty thousand some students. There's educational needs that are not being addressed. It has nothing to do with social justice, but social justice takes away from the mandated duty of the board, which is educational needs. Normal, no more funding or conversation is needed to political agendas, but transition to focus on educational needs. No more funding is needed. The funds are there. They're already established. Things to address their social justice is not enough talk about true educational needs. District personnel and board members wish to address social justice that should be done on their time, on, on your own dime, and not on the purpose of a school board to further your agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have Irina Gyanenko, followed by DJ Waldo. Irina?
Good evening, board. Nice to meet you, all of them. All of you, I'm sorry. First of all, I apologize. I may need a little bit more time.
So, folks can't hear. Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I apologize. Better?
Yes.
Okay, so I may need a little bit extra time. I will try to avoid it. But due to my condition, I may need just a little bit of more time to finish what I have to say. I, I do have everything written down. So my name is Irina Gyanenko. I am a mother of a student in San Juan District. And it was a rompy boat, but bumpy road for my child and I at times, but there were times when you guys were extremely helpful. I have always been an advocate for children who are unique. And very often, they are excluded, bullied, not helped, and do not support, do not have support from schools, and not to the fault of their own, but because they do not have enough resources. We experience it firsthand. This grant, I'm in a big support of it. This grant will provide more resources for children that are different, that are unique. This grant provides more resources for children that and will, will allow them access to academics with the proper support, with the help of support of staff, such as counselors and accessible materials, giving opportunities that would not exist otherwise. That is the point of the grant. At first, I didn't understand the opposition to the grant, especially, I apologize, I'm out of time.
Net, yes, that was, that was the three minutes.
That was the extended time.
Like extended time?
You were granted extended time because of the condition you noticed, but that was the extended time of three minutes. And I have to ask you to conclude your comments.
That was, uh.
And next, we'll have DJ Waldo, followed by Murad Mo Sarama.
Uh, before I go, may I say just, may I ask just for thirty seconds?
I'm really sorry, but I can't. We already extended your time, and so it's just not fair to the others. But I am asking staff to follow up with you so that there can be some follow-up. So thank you so much for your comments, but we're going to need to invite the next speaker up now.
Before I go, I have really big concern for one of your members who are openly speaking in my community against non-traditional sexual.
I'm sorry, man, your time is up.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, next we have DJ Waldo, followed by Murad Mo Sarama.
Hello, hello. Good evening, everyone. I don't know the formal way to thank everybody, but my name is DJ Waldo. I have four kids in San Juan, an eighth grader, sixth grader, and third grade twins. We've been in the district for seven years now. When, this was brought to my attention last week, or yeah, last week about the board meeting vote last time. And I had concern about a couple people abstaining and people saying no. And I'm, I'm just, I, I just, it's just confusing to me. So I just wanted to read again two things from this. And unfortunately, I think a lot of people that, some of the people have left that I think need to hear this, but hopefully you all can hear it. It says, the purpose, I'm just going to read from the grant program. The purpose of the anti-bias education grant programs is to prevent, address, and eliminate racism and bias in all California public schools and make all public schools inclusive and supportive of all people. What I don't understand is like, how can you be against that? Like, like what am I missing? I mean, I literally read this and I was like, yeah, well, no, yeah, like obvious, right? Next part, it says, I'm skipping down a little bit. Emphasis shall be on preventing antisemitism and bias or prejudice towards groups, including but not limited to African-Americans, Asian Pacific Islanders, Latinos, and people who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning youth. Again, like what am I missing? I mean, you can see me. I am as white, privileged, upper-middle-class, white dude as it gets, right? This is not affecting me right now. None of this will affect me. Fortunately, most of this, whatever happens tonight, won't affect my family. We're very lucky. We're very fortunate. We're very privileged. But I'm worried about all the other kids, and I don't understand. I just don't get it. Like literally, nobody has explained to me, other than we're fascist or whatever else. I don't understand why this isn't a, a yes.
Next, we have Murad Mo Sarama, followed by Rachel Raymond.
Good evening, President Creason, Ms. Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham, members of the board, and Ms. Vieskis, sending you positive vibes. Feel better. I haven't taken this podium for public comment since the basket of board member Mr. Miller. May he rest in peace. Steve was a true servant leader, whose leadership is greatly missed. Speaking of leadership, this board can lead by this grant, two hundred thousand dollars, to support the Equity Initiative of the district. This is not controversial. It is not. This is a safety issue. If our students are targeted because of their identities, they are not safe. And they are not safe. When they're not safe, they cannot learn. No matter how well a statement is recited, to pull the recommendation of the consent calendar or not sound inoffensive, it is offensive. Especially when the district was dealing with an antisemit, semi-graffiti in the, in the schools. That's very offensive. Our kids of all backgrounds should feel welcome and safe in our schools. On such a training programs are the foundation of safety above all. Thank you.
Next, we have Rachel Raymond, followed by Alan Rowe.
Thank you, President Creason, and members of the board. My name is Rachel Raymond. I am a, a parent of a child at Thomas Edison Language Institute, a school in your district that's grounded in diversity and inclusion. I stand today to express my support for implementation of the grant. And I, I realize that there's little that I can add that hasn't already been said in support of, of the implementation of this grant. But I did want to reflect on a, a couple of points because I watched the feed of the vote, uh, the vote down from consent calendar for this item at the last meeting. And part of the reason that the, this item was voted down was the belief that anti-bias training was going to be delivered and that training would somehow impinge on an individual student or teachers of religious beliefs, their sincerely held religious beliefs. And while I, I'm still at a loss at understanding how diversity education would even impinge on an individual's freedom of religion and expression, that's not what this grant does. There isn't training for educators that is part of this grant. It's not what has been applied for. It's not part of the deliverables of this grant. And to be clear, the, the board voted this down without even knowing that the grant had been applied for. It was, without realizing that you were already being considered. You've been approved for this funding. And now you're at the point of, will we take the money that is being given to us or instead deny it and refuse to implement the very noble goals of, uh, developing a supportive and approachable school environment for all students?
Next, we have Alan Rowe.
Hold on, don't start here, please. Let me get started. Let me get situated. I got to maximize my time. I can go now. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, superintendent, to the community members that are here, the staff, people that are listening. I come to you as a resident, thirty-five years of the San Juan School District, taxpayer, father, grandfather. Grandfather of six, five already been through or in the school, four in the schools now. One graduated from Merrilloma in the IB program, awesome program. One is three. He'll be coming along. But I have, I have four of those kids that are the one percent that the woman, I mean, the teacher spoke about, special needs. And you're looking out for them, and we, we honor that and we appreciate that. But my grandson, who is in the, in the seventh grade now, came home last year and told his mom and daddy that he was bullied. There was racial slurs said to him, and he was hurt. He doesn't know what to do. I went with his mother and his father to the school, talked to the principal, and she was working on addressing the issue. But the issue remained. My grandson is now doing independent study. He's only in the seventh grade. I have another one who was in Merrilloma. She's doing independent study. We need to find a way to work for all the kids. We have to find solutions. I believe that, I believe what BJ Waldo said. What are we here for? It's a no-brainer. I don't understand. Truly, any of you that don't see the value of this, I'm confused. I can talk to you offline because I have 23 seconds. I was a board member for 13 years. I know what it takes. I've been a black man for 72 years. 50 years I've been working to help young people see what it means to be strong in spite of what everybody else may say about you. Please, don't make this more than it should be. Just vote and do what you, do the right thing. Thank you very much.
And President Creason, that was, that was our final public comment.
Thank you so much for facilitating public comment and for all of the comments. Um, and now we will turn it to the board. Do board members have questions and comments? Ms. Costa.
Thank you. Thank you. I supported this grant two weeks ago when it was on consent calendar and I still support it. And I really appreciated hearing the comments from our community members, our parents. It, for me, it is an issue that every child in this district from the time they enter the district to the time they graduate, be treated with utmost respect from their peers, from the staff, from the community. This grant provides that so that every student has a voice. When we received comments by email, several people talked about why aren't you focusing on test scores? And somebody said that tonight. And it's interesting because when you think about equity, equity is the umbrella. And it provides a learning environment that is safe. It provides the social emotional skills for students to learn how to become part of a community. And it's interesting because there is a meta-analysis uh study that was done about social emotional learning. And it was done across all the states, but it was also done across multiple countries. The places that have strong social emotional learning taking place, the gain of equity is the umbrella to that. Score 11% higher on standardized tests. So for people who want to focus on the test scores, this is a way to allow our students to be safe in classrooms so they can do well. Test scores are only one tiny bit of data. But this is something that is going to make a difference in our students' lives. Um, I, I cannot say strongly enough. We need this and more money to focus on equity and diversity in San Juan. And I encourage everyone to support the grant.
Other comments, questions, Ms. Mr. Avi?
Thank you very much. As one of the people that wanted more information, I'm grateful to staff, both for the presentation and the background materials that were shared here. Um, and grateful to all the public comment that we received, both an email and for those folks that are in the room. Um, I am supportive of this grant. I think it's a good grant. Um. I particularly digging into it, getting beyond the summary that we were provided in the board letter. I'm very supportive of the identity groups identified in the grant for the simple purpose that I support identity groups for the same reason that I support activity groups. When a student is able to find their place in community, they're going to be in a better position to learn. Um, I tell my own kids that you got to find your people, right? It might be the football team, it might be the ping pong team, it may be a club, but you just, you have to find your people. And I think that's what identity groups support. I struggled with identity groups because when I first think about it, it seems like something that divides us. And I think that is some of the comments that I received. And I, I understand that perspective, but I think what I've seen from the district, what I've seen from presentations before this board are that identity groups are, are a step. Because the next step is bringing people together in community. I think it was the Black Student Union, they were presenting on their activities. And it's a great example because the identity club was the first step. And then they held a fair at the school where they brought everybody together. And I think that when we do that, whether it's an equity liaison, an identity club, I see the value in that and I see how that directly contributes to education. I will note, I wouldn't have known about that if I hadn't asked for the additional materials. For me, I'm a person that likes information when I make decisions. This was a case where I needed more information and I availed myself of that option. I know that's not the way everybody does it, but that's the way that I process things and that's the decision that I made. I'm pleased to be here tonight and be able to support this grant. So thank you.
Mr. Hern, oops. Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I really appreciate it. I as well, when I abstained two weeks ago, I did so because I wanted to be better informed on this agenda item. Over the last two weeks, I tried to do just that. I met with Dr. Calvin and Mr. Field Ridley, and during that meeting, they answered all my questions. We met for a lengthy period of time, actually. And I wanted to know what is the grant, how does, who does it benefit and how does it work? And this is what I found out as I dug deeper. I found this grant to be simple. It provides funding for liaison and advisors at certain sites. It supports all students. As it reads in the pack and on page two, it will create more inclusive environments for all students. That includes race, gender, age, sexual orientation, disability, religion, and more. The how, it supports efforts to abide hate, bigotry, racisms, or any form of bias or prejudice as it reads in the grant application. I appreciate you both for taking the time with me to help me understand this fully. And I feel that the report speaks for itself. Thank you.
Ms. Crep.
Do you want to give Paula a chance?
I think we'll, Ms. Crep.
I'm happy to jump in whenever.
Said you'll jump in.
Ms. Viaskas.
Uh, thank you very much um for, to staff for pulling this together. I, as was made in my remarks when this was first brought forward um two weeks ago, I am supportive of this effort and I just, again, want to express my gratitude to staff for putting this together and to, in general, our amazing grant department and team who on a regular basis brings in a ton of money for direct support to our students. And I'm super grateful for those efforts. I also want to just say thank you to those who came to speak at the board meeting tonight and to those who also submitted comments via email. Um, in our emails, there were a number of individuals who wrote in opposition to the grant and a couple spoke this evening to believing that this effort doesn't protect people with religious beliefs. And I want to take this opportunity to clarify that that is absolutely not correct. The goals of the grant funding are to engage in efforts to prevent and address bias or prejudice toward any group of people. This work is key in building welcoming and supportive learning environments for all of our children. If our kids don't feel welcome at school, which the data shows us that more and more do not here in San Juan, they cannot learn. I want to also point out that at our last meeting, we heard an agenda item regarding absences and truancy. Our primary tool to decrease absenteeism and truancy in that report was prevention, which is creating safe and inclusive environments for our students. This work could not be more imperative. I will always support our identity work in service to all of our kids, including our Black Student Unions, our GSAs, our Latinx clubs, and other identity clubs and supports. I remain alarmed about remarks that have been made both via email this evening and in other venues regarding concerns of religious coercion around supporting gender identities specifically, particularly given the political conversation happening in school board rooms across the region. This is clearly geared towards our students and staff who identify as LGBTQ and I will not stand for hatred or bigotry towards them or anyone else. To paraphrase the American writer James Baldwin, "We may not always agree. We can disagree with each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression or that of any in my community and denial of their humanity." The grant, this grant is a drop in a very large bucket of funding that we need to adequately achieve the goals of making sure all of our students feel welcomed at school. So I support that it will go towards direct support for our students in the form of equity liaison teams and identity club advisory teams. Thank you again. I'm glad to support this grant.
Ms. Crepcheck.
I would like to thank everyone, first and foremost, who took the time to email and come and comment here today. Um, as a refugee from a country that suppressed speech, I value the opportunity and the right to voice opinions, both privately and publicly. And I appreciate you. And I particularly appreciate the people who did so in a civil manner without resorting to personal attacks. I also believe that disagreement is part of that discourse and is actually a cornerstone, cornerstone of our democracy in our country. I stand by the statements that I made previously. I really want to stress that I value what you said today. And despite what you may feel, I do hear you. And there are very many people in this room that are doing really amazing work. And I value that for the San Juan School District. But although we share a lot of, a lot in common of the how, or excuse me, of the what, we disagree on the how and the where. And I maintain that this grant in the how and the where may violate people's deeply held religious beliefs, which is a protected class. And for that reason, I do not support the implementation of this grant.
Okay, um, the, many of my comments have either been said um in front of the di- at the podium or behind the dais, so I think I'm just going to round us off with just a couple of personal notes to tie it to the work. Um, my son in fifth grade received a flurry of hate messages. I mean, fifth grade, my baby was in fifth grade. I mean, and he showed me his phone. He didn't even know what to do with the words. I mean, the N-word, kill yourself, this and that about your mom, black this, black that. I still have him if anyone would like to see him. I'll never forget. And it was devastating. It was absolutely devastating. And I'm going to be 100%. It wasn't necessarily handled very well. Um, it was very clear. It was someone that knew Kaden. It was very clear. It was someone from his school at the time. We have the lived experience of when things go really wrong, like really, really wrong. And I'll tell you, my baby was, I mean, he was immediately in therapy and he lets me talk about this um story. Um, and thank goodness he had me there, you know, to just kind of put him in the spaces and like, oh my gosh, we're going to heal from this and you're beautiful, you're everything. Um, and I know our experience isn't unique. And so when I think about, you know, my comments, of course, I supported it last time. I'll support it this time. But when I speak about the urgency, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about. It's not just the black community. It's all diverse communities. And I know in um SJUSD, we're hitting close to 50% people of color, which is a huge dramatic shift from when I was first elected in 2018. We are a changing, growing, in a beautiful way, um, community. And we know that that number doesn't always capture all the diversity. We don't know who's LGBTQ plus in that number diversity. We don't know. We know there are a lot of our newcomer families identify as white, so it might not, you know, but that's a diverse population too, with different and I, uh, unique needs. So I raised just, just to say myself, my family have lived experience of the issues that were outlined on what I believe is sex, uh, slide three. It calls it out very, very beautifully, you know, significant increase in racial tensions and discrimination. Um, bullying, um, issues of bias, I mean, all the things are slide three. I mean, the need is there and are, my family or myself personally has personally experienced those things. So something that I know has been challenging throughout the years is when folks, often well-meaning, let's be honest, sometimes not, that don't have that shared lived experience, tell us we don't need something. When we say this will help or this is something we need, when someone that doesn't share that lived experience says, no. It's devastating. It's really hard to get over. It's really hard to overcome. Um, I also think a lot about my family. You know, a lot of people have heard the story. I've lost two siblings uh to suicide. All of my siblings had substance use issues. Um, all of my siblings, all four of them have passed away. And I'll tell you what, if there were services like this in my diverse family, I'm pretty sure I could call one of my siblings, any of them, after this meeting and be like, ooh, you should have seen this meeting. But I'm not going to be able to do that. So if I could save anybody's sibling, then I, I want to go ahead and do that. So I just want to share, I thought, I felt like that's a way to round this out. I don't need to repeat what others have said. Um, of course I support this work and um I'll leave it at that. And I think it's probably time for a vote.
Okay. I would like to move the item.
Okay, the item has been moved by Ms. Viaskas. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Costa. We will roll, call, vote. Ms. Crepcheck?
Nay.
Ms. Viaskas?
Aye.
Mr. Avi?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Costa?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes. I've won. Thank you. Thank you, community. Uh, we are at item I two, Cultivating Leaders Program, Dr. Kelvin. Ref intermission. Um, the board would like to take a quick recess, so I'm going to adjourn us into recess. Is five minutes good for five minutes? So we'll, we'll be back shortly. Thank you. I'm going to ask those in the back of the room, if you can move conversations outside of the boardroom. We're going to continue with business, or of course, feel free to join us and have a seat. Dr. Kelvin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Once again, good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. The Cultivating Leaders Program was launched last year as a pilot. Tonight, we'll provide an overview of the program, discuss the outcome of the first year of implementation, and share how we have grown and developed as we move forward in the 2023, 2024 school year. San Juan Unified School District, San Juan Professional Educators Coalition, and San Juan Teachers Association have worked collaboratively over the past year and a half with one main goal in mind, the development of a program designed to recruit and retain a diverse team of leaders and help them develop the interpersonal and interpersonal skills needed to successfully serve our schools. Originally, there were three cohorts, practitioner teacher and an aspiring administrator cohort comprised of SJTA members and a new administrator cohort comprised of SJAPEC first and second year administrators. Our cohorts have expanded this year and now include members of the California School Employees Association, the Confidential Group, and San Juan Administrators Association. We had 68 participants last year and have started the 2324 school year with 86 participants. This table shows a breakdown of participant representation for the 2022, 2023, and the 2023, 2024 school year. We like to point out that in addition to our new members, there is a significant increase from the teacher practitioner group and a significant drop in the vice principal principal group. And while attention is a normal part of any organization, there is considerably less reflected in our 2324 numbers. This is a good thing. One of our goals is to retain leaders, and several of these administrative openings that did come about were the result of promotions, not resignations. That includes five vice principal participants from last year's program that were promoted to a principal position. And if you see a discrepancy, four versus five is because one was promoted last year in the springtime. And three aspiring administrative participants who were promoted to vice principal position in 2324. So these were teachers or practitioners who were in the program last year and promoted to vice principal positions. We also surveyed our practitioner and teacher leader cohorts in order to determine whether or not there was increased participation in leadership roles at their sites. And many shared that they had taken on positions such as SJTA refs, coaches, committee members, meeting facilitators, coordinators, and as one participant shared a leadership role in her community outside of the district. The three major components of the program are mentoring, which is an opportunity for individual support, seminars, which provide training in the inter interpersonal skills, and networking events, which allow all members of the program to interact and build relationships with one another. Our motto was and continues to be, do the best that you can until you know better, and when you know better, do better. We survey our participants on a regular basis and have taken their input and made a number of changes which are reflected in this year's program. These include the reordering and revision of our seminars, the expansion of our cohorts, and the addition of after-school practicum workshops such as interview preparation, obtaining your administrative credential, and sharing power in partnership with families. Our mentors are comprised of both current and retired San Juan administrators. We support them in part by facilitating regular meetings in which they can share experiences and collaborate with one another, and by sharing the results of an interest survey that their assigned participants take, all so that they can better meet the individual needs of each mentee. We also encourage them to attend the seminars in order to better reinforce the skills that their mentees are learning. Finally, mentors serve as sponsors for their mentee and help facilitate shadowing opportunities. The mentor-mentee relationship is one of the highlights of the program. It is my pleasure to introduce Principal Aaron Werzer, who is in his second year as a mentor, and his mentee Vice Principal Michelle Sherman, who will discuss her experience as a teacher participant last year, who is currently in our vice principal cohort.
Hello. I'm Michelle Sherman, and I've had the privilege of working in San Juan for over 25 years. In that time, I've had several mentors that have helped me to become the educator that I am today. But through the years, my needs have also changed, and so have my mentors. Last year, when I was accepted into the Cultivating Leaders as an aspiring administrator, I was fortunate enough to have Michelle Flagler, a retired administrator, as my mentor. She guided me through the process of revamping my resume and letter of intent. She also worked with me on preparing for my interviews, and she helped me, she helped and guided me through the logistics portion of my journey. In this, my second year in Cultivating Leaders, my needs are definitely different than in my first year. As Sylvan's new vice principal, I find every day brings on new challenges and new learning. There's no binder or book that helped prepare me for this job as a vice principal. However, having Aaron, whom I've had the pleasure of working with for several years on the system of professional growth, and now as my mentor, I know that I can contact him and ask him anything and confide it in him into my day-to-day interactions. Aaron has given me permission to accept that I'm on a very steep hill and that when, just when I think I've learned something new and something else is, has come my way that I think I've got, there are hundreds of other things that I still do not know, but that's okay, because that's the job. Aaron brings his years of experience and wisdom with him each time we talk or meet. He brings the trustworthiness of a loyal advisor and friend, and I feel lucky and supported through our mentor-mentee relationship. Cultivating Leaders has brought us together with a different need, and I will be stronger and a more confident leader because of this program and because of the support that is provided through the mentor program. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Aaron Werzer. Over the past 15 years, I've served as a VP and Principal of Will Rogers and the Principal of Carnegie Middle School. When I was a new admin, I was excited, enthusiastic about this amazing opportunity, but I did not know what I was stepping into. Like many new jobs, a lot of the learning about the position happens after the work begins. You don't know what you don't know. The first few years, I spent a huge amount of time trying to figure out what to do next when applying directional resolving problems that often I had created due to my many missteps. In my new admin position, I had just met my coVP and our new relationship, there was no trust. I had no idea how to dress my first principal. I did not know what questions I was allowed to ask and who I was allowed to mask them to. It became very isolating. Pressures from parents, new situations with students, and the always constant of guiding staff led to struggles with pressure and nowhere to turn. Having this lived experience has led me to find great value in the Cultivating Leaders Program. In the past two years, I've had the honor of mentoring four new middle school administrators through this initiative. The thought of having someone to turn to has been incredibly comforting when I look back at the stresses I had as a new admin. When I speak to the mentees, they talk about struggles. I'm able to relate to these specific moments in time. Often just by sharing that many of these problems are universal and are not a specific response to work they have or have not done helps to offer reassurance to the work they still have to accomplish. I'm hoping by speaking to them and how common some of these same issues are at every site and offering them some guidance of how to work with them, I can reduce some of the stress that come with the position. This mentor program requires a minimum amount of conversations to occur every month. I believe this required mentor-mentee time has benefited the mentors as well. Administrators often don't have carved out time to stop and talk through a problem. It has helped to keep me, for lack of a better term, sharp. Through our conversations, I'm relearning how to address old situations in today's context. I have to often rethink how I dress old situations and reexamine my bag of tools as I address problems. I get to mix years of experience with new thoughts and energy as I am moving forward. Thank you.
We are conducting seven seminars this year that all focus on various aspects of communication, relationships, and reflection. We also hosted our first event of the year on August 3rd, which was our annual meet and greet. It was well-attended with over 100 people present and provided an opportunity for mentors and mentees to meet one another and to begin to explore their strengths. The Cultivating Leaders Advisory, which is a collaborative forum by the San Juan Teachers Association, San Juan Professional Educators Coalition, and San Juan Unified meets monthly to review data, prepare seminars, and make program adjustments. Voice is important, and decisions are made based primarily on input from our participants. Next steps include the addition of after-school workshops and book studies. We will continue to seek leadership opportunities for our participants and add a pre and post survey that will help us make better levels, measure better levels of growth. That marks the end of this presentation, and I'd like to point out that in addition to Aaron and Michelle, all of our advisory members are here, including advisory members Shannon Brown and Executive Director of San Juan's Teachers Association, Damon Smith, the President of San Juan's Professional Educators Coalition, and would be, we would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Any comments, questions from the board? Mr. Avi?
I just wanted to, the comment is, thank you. I think it's no secret that we're going through a generational shift in education employment. We have a lot of new leaders that are emerging, and I think programs like this are going to be critical to, you know, training our own, right? Finding those people that have a heart and passion for San Juan Unified and helping them become the leaders in San Juan Unified. I think it's a wonderful program. So thank you to you for running the program and then also to the mentors and mentees that are choosing to participate, because I know it's extra on top of extra. And it's appreciated.
Mr. Hernandez?
Dr. Kelvin, I'm just curious on how the mentor-mentee are matched together. I mean, is there a draft or how does it work?
No special formula, but we do. No special formula, but we do get together the advisory group. We know the mentors as well as the mentees, and we try to match based on their strengths and their relationship and their grade levels proximity. We just look at all those things and try to match them up, and usually we're a hit.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Just to pipe in to say I would watch that if it was a draft.
Awesome. I'll just say, what a cool program. I mean, there's just so much opportunity with it, you know, growing, I mean, instilling the idea that someone could grow. Sometimes we don't see ourselves as a leader, right? But you just need someone to say, no, you would be great, you know, just need some training. So there's that bucket that I think is wonderful. And then there's another bucket of, you know, there's a lot of people that do get put into management roles because they're really good at their current job, not necessarily because they're great at this new job. A lot of management decisions are, you know, you're really good at making widgets. I'm not dumbing down the edge of work of education. It's just, you know, an analogy that comes up in the business space quite a bit. And so this really does take the time to build in the training that takes time. And to do it in a way that there's a community of practice so that grows with the cohort is a really beautiful thing that continues to provide that just ongoing support and professional development and strength in jobs that are actually quite hard. So those are my two cents. I just think it's a great program and really appreciate the report.
Thank you. All right, we are now at item I three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, unaudited actuels and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget revisions. Ms. Stahlheber.
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, we're going to review the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuels along with the revised twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So what are unaudited actuels? They are year end financial statements that we prepare to present to you. They become our final audited actuels in December after our financial audit is completed, and we bring it back to you at that time. It's required by education code four two one zero zero, so we're fulfilling that requirement by bringing this. And I think that covers everything on there. I'm going to read it to you. So we're going to start with our unaudited actuals revenues for our unrestricted funds. Our unrestricted revenues increased by sixteen point one million since estimated actuels, which were brought to you in June. Approximately seven million is a result of the P two ADA mitigated mitigation certification that we forecast when we brought that budget to you and discussed the estimated actuels. Other state revenues increased approximately two million as a result of one point eight million in adjustments to prior year and current year lottery allocations and some small adjustments to other state grants. Other local revenues increased by seven point three million. Six million was made up of higher interest earnings in quarters three and four from the county treasury. This category revenue fluctuates. It's based on average daily balance, pull treasury rate, and subject to economic conditions and overall performance. The remaining difference is a result of approximately eight hundred and two thousand and increased fees collected and five hundred and forty thousand in E-rate credits. We're moving on to our restricted revenues now. Restricted revenues increased twelve point two million since estimated actuels. L C F F category reflects an adjustment to the property tax portion of our S L P revenues in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand. Our federal revenues decreased approximately five million as a result of unspent federal funds. Federal programs require that unspent awards amounts be booked as deferred revenue and will be reflected as adjustments in our twenty-three, twenty-four budget when carryover is posted and we bring first interim back to you in December. The programs with carryover include Title One, Two, and Three and federal COVID grants. Our other state revenues increased approximately sixteen point four million. It may revise reductions were proposed for the learning recovery block grant and the art, music, and instructional material block grant that were significantly lower in the final adopted budget. So this resulted in an increased revenue in the amount of fifteen point one million for these two programs alone. The remaining approximately one point three million is the net result of adjustments to multiple state programs, the largest being a one point five million increase in our restricted lottery revenues. Local restricted revenues increased approximately six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, four hundred and three thousand of which the increase was related to donations received. The remainder was a result of adjustments to multiple local restricted programs. So you can see how our revenues break out. The largest portion of our funds are derived from the local control funding formula. That makes up sixty-one point eight percent. These funds are calculated based on our ADA, grade span base rate. And in addition, we receive grade span adjustment funds, supplemental funds based on percentage of unduplicated targeted students, which are our free and reduced qualified students, English language learners, and our homeless foster youth. So here are unrestricted expenditures, our estimated actuels versus our unaudited actuels. Unrestricted actual expenditures reflect a decrease of eight point five million at close versus estimated actuels. Salaries and benefits decreased by approximately three point seven million. This was a result of unfilled vacant positions, unspent stipends and signing bonuses, and summer school expenses that were not paid prior to June thirtieth. As we transitioned to the new system, they were moved into that system. Books and supplies reflect a decrease of approximately one point eight million as a result of approximately seven hundred and forty thousand in unspent site funds. The remaining funds are the result of unspent department funds. Shipping delays account for a portion of the unspent funds, and those expenses will be reflected in first interim when carryover will be included in the revised budget. You also see some of those in our revised budget that we'll discuss after we're done talking about estimated actuels as some items came in and have already needed to be paid for. So we've thus already anticipated what that carryover would be in a budgeted. Services and other operating expenses reflect a decrease of approximately two point nine million. Approximately one hundred sixty-one thousand as a result of unspent utility budget. Five hundred and twenty-six thousand is a result of unspent budget for repairs related to buses, tech equipment, and site and department rental and lease budgets. Approximately one point five million was a result of unspent site and department funds for consulting and professional services. And the remaining approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand is a result of unspent postage and phone budgets. Capital outlay reflects a decrease of approximately six hundred and fifty-two thousand due to a warehouse truck being delivered after June thirtieth and for, due to the reclassification of an expenditure. Restricted expenditures decreased by approximately twenty-one point five million. Salaries and benefits reflect a decrease of approximately four point two as a result of unfilled vacant positions, unspent stipends, and again, some of those summer school restricted programs that were moved into the, the current year. Books and supplies reflect a decrease of approximately fourteen point one million. Four point nine is due to a delayed receipt of textbooks that we expected to receive before June thirtieth, but came in after July one. So they've been moved into our current budget. Excuse me. One point nine million is unused donation funds that will be budgeted as carryover and reflected in first interim. And the remaining funds were unused site and department budgets for supplies and materials. Services and other operating expenses reflect a decrease of three point eight million. Approximately five hundred and forty-nine thousand is a result of a decrease in special ed outside services. One point zero two million is related to service contracts that will carry over into the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four year for expanded learning opportunity program. And the remaining funds were unused funds from various sites and departments. An increase of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand is related to a bus that we anticipated receiving after July one, but we received June thirtieth. So this is the breakdown of our unaudited expenditures, and you can see eighty-six point three seven percent of our total expenditures are related to salaries and benefits. The next biggest category is our service and other operating expenses, which make up eight point four six percent of our budget. So this is our general fund summary, and you can see that we experienced an increase in our total revenues of twenty-eight point four million and a decrease in our total expenditures of thirty point zero five one. So overall, our fund balance increased by approximately fifty-eight point five as a result of those changes. And these are the components of our ending fund balance. So our total ending fund balances at unaudited actuels of two hundred and fifty-four point eight million consist of some non-spendable. Those are our prepaid items, our stores. We have restricted balance of a hundred and eighteen million, our committed funds, our forty-one point two million, assigned funds, six point four millions, and our reserve for economic uncertainty, which is required two percent set aside of eleven point eight million. Currently, our unassigned balance is to seventy-five point eight four million. Here is some additional details around those committed funds. So we have a bus replacement plan, and you can see we didn't have any changes in there. The only changes we had from what we brought at estimated actuels to now was an adjustment in our text device refresh enhancements. We will have, will be bringing a new resolution to you at the next board meeting to update our committed funds. So the unspent supplemental funds will be added to that committed fund balance as those funds must be used for the purposes they were received. Here is a summary of our other funds. All funds reflect a positive fund balance. Choices Charter School reflects a surplus of just under two hundred thousand. Our adult education reflects a small deficit. We're working to monitor that with the site leadership to ensure that it's not a structural deficit and make any adjustments as needed. The Child Development Fund reflects a surplus, although expenses outpace revenues. So the surplus is a result of rating of our ELO P funds for qualifying school age children attending our Discovery Club program, which is reflected in that other financing column. And that was approximately one point five million. The remaining two point seven million of the transfer was allocated as part of our ELO ESSER plan to support the program as it used fund balance to support deficits experienced in twenty twenty-one in the amount of approximately one point eight million and expected further deficits as a state was recovering from the pandemic. The program also used one point four million in one-time COVID funds that were awarded through this, from the state directly to Fund Twelve. Without the use of the previously received COVID funds and the district transferred ELO ESSER, the program would have experienced a deficit of two point one million. Now we're going to move on to our revised twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And you can see we experienced an increase in our L C F F. Again, that is related to the ADA mitigation that was certified with our P two. And then we also experienced, and we booked an increase to our local revenue as a result of those increased interest earnings in quarters three and four. We typically don't budget that until we receive them because it does fluctuate so much, but with our high fund balance currently and receiving so much in those final two quarters, we went ahead and bumped it up by two million dollars. On our restricted side, the only increase that we've experienced was for the teacher residency program. The rates increased in the final budget act. And for our expenditures on the unrestricted side, we saw an increase of five point nine six. Four point nine of that is increases to salary and benefits related to LCAP goals that added staff to sites, including two point two five in school site support staff for safe environments. The remaining increase was a result of twenty-two, twenty-three expenditures that were not received until after June thirtieth that we mentioned in a prior slide. On the restricted, we budgeted that additional three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the teacher residency program, and that's what you see reflected here. Our overall general fund summary. The net impact of the increased revenues and expenditures is a projected increase of approximately two point two nine to our ending fund balance. So next steps, we'll have our final audit report that we'll bring back to you in December, along with that first interim budget. We're going to work with our labor partners to settle negotiation and revise budgets as needed. Now we'll revise our assumptions as more information comes out from the state and general economic conditions, and then continue to build system wide understanding, strategically align resources to goals, and identify efficiencies to improve workflows and maximize our resource potential. Any questions? Thank you so much for walking us through that. Questions, comments from the board, Mr. Avi?
So I have a math question. You don't have to answer it now. But if you look at slide eight on unaudited, unaudited actuels expenditures, which is the pie chart. I think it's also in another chart. We have, you have listed by certificated salaries, classified salaries, and then benefits. I think at some point in the future, I'd be interested to just see how the benefits that that percentage applies to classified and certificated employees, almost like a portion of both, right? Like, how does that twenty-nine percent break out to the two classifications similar to salary? So again, not something you have to do now, but just a piece of information that might be helpful to me in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other comments, questions? Ms. Kretschek?
My comment would just be, thank you. You make it sound so easy. And I really appreciate the succinct and clear report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we recommend the Board of Trustees approve the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuels. And I want to give a special thanks and shout out to the Fiscal Services Department.
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
It's so seamlessly. It's like, would you like to?
Oh, sorry.
So move by Ms. Yeskes, two second, dude.
I did.
Let Ms. Kretschek, roll call vote, Ms. Kretschek.
Aye.
Ms. Yeskes. Mr. Avi.
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez.
Aye.
Ms. Costa is absent, and I vote aye. So the motion does pass with five ayes and one absent member. Thank you. Appreciate it. We are at item I four, conveyance of a permanent easement at Catherine Johnson Middle School at the Creekside Site, Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board call a public hearing in order to solicit public comment and to adopt resolution number four zero nine five declaring the conveyance of a permanent easement at Catherine Johnson Middle School to the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, otherwise known as, as SMUD.
I declare the topic of conveying a permanent easement at Catherine Johnson Middle School Creekside Site to the Sacramento Municipal Utility District SMUD, a public hearing, and is now open for public comment. There being no comments, I declare the public hearing closed. Do any board members have questions or comments? Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez, move the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Avi, and to be clear, this is a motion to adopt resolution number four oh nine five. Roll, roll call vote. Ms. Kretschek?
Aye.
Ms. Yeskes?
Aye.
Mr. Avi?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Costa is absent, and I vote aye. So the motion passes with five ayes and one abstention. I'm sorry, one absent member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're still here, huh? I apologize.
Item I five, notice to convey a permanent easement at Casa Robla Fundamental High School, Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, President Creason. The superintendent is recommending that the board adopt resolution number four zero nine seven declaring the intent to convey a permanent easement at Casa Robla Fundamental High School to the Citrus Heights Water District and to call a public hearing to be held on September twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-three. I'm here to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you so much. Is there, are there any questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to adopt resolution number four oh nine seven?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Kretschek, second. Is there a second? Segmented by Mr. Avi. We will move to a roll call vote. Ms. Kretschek?
Aye.
Ms. Yeskes?
Aye.
Mr. Avi?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Costa is absent, and I vote aye. The motion passes with five ayes and one absent member. So much.
Thank you.
We are at item I six, exemption to the separation from service requirement. Dr. Toto?
Good evening, President Creason, board members, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, I bring forward upon the superintendent's recommendations that governing board adopt the resolution number four zero eight nine for the exemption of the separation from service requirement pursuant, pursuant to the education code two four two one four point five or two six eight one two. In response to the concerns of the difficulty of employers hiring substitute teachers during the current teacher shortage, the existing law provides an exemption to the separation from service requirement. And this resolution, basically what this does, it allows us to bring back retired employees prior to the hundred and eighty days that they're supposed to wait to come back and provide service for us. And the resolution has identified two individuals who were interested who were interested in coming back prior to that 180 days. So I ask for your approval of the resolution.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from the board? This is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 4089?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Avi. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hernandez. We'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Kretschek?
Aye.
Ms. Vieskas?
Aye.
Mr. Avi?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Costa is absent, and I vote aye. The motion passes with five ayes and one absent member.
Thank you very much.
We are at item J, Board Reports. Are there any board reports? Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to report that I have the flag football. Our girls' flag football was mentioned tonight by our high school visitors, and I was so impressed by these young ladies out there. And I talked to Ms. Bassinelli. We actually attend the game at Del Campo. Can't remember who they were playing, but anyway. To find out that every high school...
Was it Del Campo?
No, it was not a center.
It was a center.
Center, another district. But to find out that every high school in our district except one is participating in girls' flag football. And it's outstanding. And what we're hearing, or I'm hearing, that these girls are having so much fun. And at Del Campo, for example, 78 girls tried out for the team. That's more than guys went out for football. 78. So he had a cut for flag football, which is, I mean, that's sad. He had a cut, but great that participation. So that's it.
I think I was thinking about maybe the first flag football game that hit the news. I won't talk about the results because we're all winners in this, JUSD. Any other board reports? All right. We are at item K, Future Agenda. Do any board members wish to add any items to the future agenda? Okay, we do not need to return to closed session. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.